Good evening. Welcome to the first city council meeting of 2025. A Happy New Year to all. Typically, this meeting is livestreamed on YouTube and the city website. However, we're currently experiencing some technical difficulties. The meeting will be recorded and the video will be posted by the end of the next business day. If you'd like to receive an electronic city council packet to reference while viewing future broadcasts, please contact the city clerk's office during business hours or go to the city's website and subscribe to the city meeting's email list. The agenda is also accessible from any mobile device. So, given the recording that will be posted on the city website tomorrow
Yes.
for people to go back and review, should they need to. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Kate M. Bosley.
Here.
Laura E. Tobin.
Here.
Michael J. Remy.
Here.
Randy L. Filio.
Here.
Robert C. Williams.
Here.
Edward J. Haas.
Here.
Philip M. Jones.
Present.
Andrew M. Madison.
Here.
Chrissy Roberts.
Here.
Jacob R. Favalis.
Here.
Brian J. Lake.
Catherine I. Workman.
Here.
Bettina A. Chadbourne.
Thomas F. Powers.
Here.
Mitchell H. Greenwald.
Thank you. Thirteen for this evening. And councillor Madison, might I ask you to lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have our minutes of the December 19th, 2024 meeting. Councillor Greenwald for a motion.
Your Honor, move to adopt the minutes of December 19th as presented.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor of the minutes as presented. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much.
Your Honor, can you just try to raise your hand a little?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I think we're past the vote now, so.
Very good. If it's something that you think needs to be corrected, I would move to reconsider.
You can't reconsider the night of the right now.
The minutes. You really can't.
Not the same night. No. Not the same night. Councillor.
But you could.
We can chat.
I've already, I've talked to the assistant or deputy city clerk.
Okay. So, a reminder to the city council, our Rules of Order workshop is set for January 28th at 6:00 PM. We are using that as an opportunity to discuss our rules, for an educational opportunity. We could be here for a day and a half. Nobody's really planning on that. So, if you have particular topics, as some councillors have followed up with those topics, that would be really helpful. Our city staff are working on the agenda for that, and we hope to have an agenda out to you in advance of that meeting. So, yes, your comments, sooner the better. Thank you. We have a presentation this evening. I'd like to recognize Harry McElvey to come forward.
Where's the proclamation?
It's upstairs.
Happy New Evening. Good evening. Harry McElvey, three, four, three, five.
Oh, actually, you gotta, you gotta come up here to be embarrassed.
Do you have the text?
Hello, Harry.
How are you?
It's good. It's good. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you.
We have a resolution passed by the city council, whereas Harry S. McElvey began his career with the city of Keene as a full-time subdivision inspector in the Public Works Department on the 2nd of November in 1987. And then rose to a temporary airport surveyor on the 30th of July, 1990, started as the supervising airport maintenance crew on 19th of January, 1991, and was promoted to full-time engineering technician at Public Works on the 9th of December, 1991. Then transferred to the Information Technology's Technical Support Specialist position on the 13th of June in 2016, and was promoted to Transportation Stormwater Operations Manager on the 24th of October, 2021. And whereas Harry supported a myriad of engineering functions and jobs with the city, not only serving as a frontline customer contact, but also making important contributions to such projects as Eastern Avenue's drainage replacement, the Well Street parking deck, city basketball courts, baseball fields, airport and cemetery layouts, fleet services, oil tank, the water asset management plan, and other upgrades and expansion projects, juggling multiple ever-changing priorities with poise and professionalism. And whereas Harry as tree warden, Harry was responsible for forestry management in the Ellen City, tree planting, monitoring the health of trees, responding to complaints and questions from the public, providing advice about actions that should be taken on trees within the city's right-of-way, planning Arbor Day celebrations, which I participated in many, with his care and attention to Keene's urban forestry program being instrumental to the city's maintaining the Tree City USA designation for 45 straight years. And whereas Harry's able to multitask as situations present themselves, Harry's expertise with technology helped the engineering division become computerized. But his initiative steered him to assisting the city by helping to set up cardiograph applications for department work order systems and the UER GOV application for citizens, moving the city forward with its GPS GIS system, and becoming the police department's go-to person for GPS documentation of traffic accidents, and acting as a technical liaison for the entire Department of Public Works. Whereas especially adept at tackling unique, complicated, and loosely-defined assignments with creativity and tenacity, Harry consistently threw himself into issues that he didn't immediately know how to resolve, yet making the effort to ensure that things are done correctly and efficiently. And as part of the Information Technology Department, Harry helped support the diverse systems throughout the city's varied departments and operations. And whereas upon rejoining Public Works as head of the Highway Division, Harry has cared genuinely about providing an uncompromising quality of work, made sound decisions, balanced responsiveness to issues against regular planned work, dealt with issues head-on to ensure timely solutions to concerns, made his customers feel their needs have been heard, and tried to get to yes with customers whenever ethically possible, and remained open to feedback for the sake of moving forward. And whereas as a manager and team player with a wonderfully positive attitude and a willingness to take on any challenge, Harry has led his team through his challenges and workload, hired people who best will meet the needs of the team, dealt with the impacts of an influx of new employees, recognized and appreciated his staff freely, fostered team spirit among diverse personalities, and extracted the best from each person. And whereas Harry retires on the 20th of December, 2024, with over 37 years of honorable service to the city, now therefore be it resolved that the city council of Keene hereby extends its sincere thanks to Harry S. McElvey for his dedication to the city of Keene and wishes him the very best for his retirement year.
Awesome.
Congratulations.
Wow, it sounds like a lot more than what it felt like. You know, I really appreciate the opportunity I had to do the work for the city of Keene. It's, it was awesome. And, you know, if I had to do it all over again, I would. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Harry.
Okay, moving forward with our public hearing for this evening.
Notice is hereby given that a public hearing will be held before the Keene City Council relative to ordinance O. 2024-19A relative to building height in the Commerce District. The petitioner, the City of Keene Community Development Department, proposes to amend section 5.1.4 of the Land Development Code to modify the allowed height within the Commerce District to be three stories or 42 feet, and amend section 8.3.1 of the LDC to incentivize residential development in the Commerce District by permitting a height of up to six stories or 82 feet for dwelling multifamily with limitations. Per order of the mayor and council this fifth day of December 2024.
Thank you. I'd like to recognize Evan Clement from the Community Development Staff. Evan?
Good evening, everyone. Thank you. Evan Clement's planner. So, as the city clerk said, we are proposing to increase some opportunity for both commercial activity within the Commerce Zone by increasing the allowed height by right from two stories to three stories, and then also acknowledging that many portions of the city within the Commerce Zone are already part of our urban compact. So, carving out special exceptions for more large-scale multifamily while still requiring tenable commercial space on the ground floor, and then allowing residential to exist on that ground floor behind that tenable commercial space, which provides opportunity for people of different, differing mobility, as well as increasing flexibility for these kinds of projects to actually be both approved and constructed. That's all I have. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions from councillors? Seeing none, will open up the opportunity for the public to speak to the ordinance? And if I, please correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm not seeing anybody in the audience who is present to want to testify or offer opinions. Seeing none, we can close the public hearing and move on to our nominations and confirmations.
Actually, the rule is required that we keep the comments open.
Oh, yes, that's true. Clerk has just reminded me that we have no further comments for this evening, but written comments can be accepted by the city clerk up until 1:00 PM on Tuesday, January Now we'll move on.
Thank you. So, this evening we have some nominations from the mayor that you received at our previous meeting, and they include: to the Ash Willet River Park Advisory Board, Leslie Casey with a term to expire December 31, 2027; to the Conservation Commission, Deborah LaBlank. Deborah's been serving as an alternate, and would like to move up to a regular position. Again, a term to expire December 31, 2027. And Sparky Von Plinsky, who has been a long-term regular member, has maxed out on his consecutive terms and is seeking to move to an alternate slot. That is an unexpired slot at this point, and it's December 31, 2025. And also Lisa Maxfield, who has been a regular member of the Energy and Climate. She wishes to continue in that service in December 31, 2027. As well as Tim Murphy, who would be new to the board, that's a regular position, December 31, 2027. And also Steve Larmen, again, a new member of the board, December 31, 2027. To the Heritage Commission, Colleen Powell, again, a regular member who's maxed out on terms, wishing to become an alternate, December 31, 2027. And to the Trustees of Trust Funds and the Cemetery Trustees, as a new member, Malcolm Katz, December 31, 2027.
Comments on the nominations? Seeing none, we can move to a vote.
With the motion?
Councillor Greenwald?
Move to confirm the nominations.
Motion made by councillor Greenwald, seconded by councillor Bosley. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Councillor Bosley.
Yes.
Councillor Tobin.
Yes.
Councillor Remy.
Yes.
Councillor Filio.
Yes.
Councillor Williams.
Yes.
Councillor Haas.
Yes.
Councillor Jones.
Yes.
Councillor Madison.
Yes.
Councillor Roberts.
Yes.
Councillor Favalis.
Yes.
Councillor Workman.
Yes.
Councillor Powers.
Yes.
Councillor Greenwald.
Motion carries unanimously. We'll move now to communications.
We have a few communications this evening. We'll start off one from Kenneth and Diane Hitchcock have reached out to their neighbors. They live at the, in the intersection of, near the intersection of Water and Woodland Avenue, and they are having issues with tractor-trailer traffic actually riding up onto their lawns and doing damage to their lawns.
We will refer this communication to the Municipal Services, Facilities, and Infrastructure Committee.
Second communication is from the Keene Downtown Group. Just in time, they're asking for permission to have the Ice and Snow Festival. We have had some protocol meetings. We'll have another one on Monday or Tuesday, and we'll be all set with a recommendation on Wednesday, but it would be to the, for the Ice and Snow Festival for February 1, 2025.
You may feel like celebrating this this week, but we'll put this off the celebration anyway, and refer this to Planning Licenses and Development Committee.
Our third and fourth communications are from John Loveland. The first one speaks to his continued concerns over the downtown infrastructure project, and specifically the bike lane issue that the Bicycle Pedestrian Path Committee had reported out on. And his second communication is about the timeline and the construction management for the project.
And I do recommend that we take a look at his communications, but these are informational, and we'll file them as such.
We're on to reports this evening. Now, we start off with an informational report from the Municipal Services Facility and Infrastructure Committee. They're reacting to Sparky Von Plinsky appearing before the committee to talk about invasive species education and management. The committee is recommending in their informational report that it be accepted as informational.
And we will do as recommended.
Our second informational report, again, from Municipal Services Facility and Infrastructure. This one is about a proposal from B's T's Screen Printing to add the necessary infrastructure to accommodate banners across Main Street. Again, informational.
And we will file that as informational as recommended by the committee.
Another Municipal Services Facility and Infrastructure Committee report. This one dealing with the marked crosswalk at the intersection of West Street and Pearl Street. On a vote of five to zero, the Municipal Services Facility and Infrastructure Committee recommends the manager be authorized to install a marked crosswalk and pedestrian beacons on West Street at the intersection of Pearl Street.
Councillor Greenwald for a motion.
Move to carry out the intent of the committee report.
Second.
Moved by councillor Greenwald and seconded by councillor Filio. Councillor Greenwald?
A number of residents came to us with the observation that there's a lot of pedestrian traffic across West Street, particularly in the area of, I would call it the Valley Green, but no, it's the Keene Inn. Safety issue. So, the committee heard the request, and it makes sense. It is a little unusual in the middle of a high-traffic street such as this. So, adding the flashing light beacon hopefully also will assist. In the long-term picture, West Street needs some improvement, but at least this is a good step.
Any further comments from the council? Councillor Powers.
Thank you, Your Honor. Not being known for being contrary too many times, I feel it's incumbent upon me to at least speak to this. It'll go at the end of the discussion this evening wherever you wish to send it. But I understand that the evaluation has been done, and it meets a criteria in the big book. But just because it's in the big book and it meets it doesn't really mean that you should do it or you have to do it every single time. And I think in this particular case, based on my training, experience, and education on this particular cause, it would cause more pedestrian accidents than it will prevent. And it will cause more automobile accidents, because clearly that piece of highway is a problem. And if you travel at the regular speed, it's a problem. If you travel above the speed, it's a problem. If you travel below the speed, because you've got four lanes of traffic going in different directions that don't adhere. And now you plunk a traffic light of sorts, a beacon light that means stop, shows you to mean stop, in the middle of it, people are not going to react to it in a timely fashion. They're not going to see people that are walking it even though that that light's out there. It's the complexion of the road that makes it very difficult, in my opinion, for us to do. It also is going to cause situations where people don't really understand, because nobody, unfortunately, nobody today pays attention to the traffic rules and what it means. I read through this several times to make sure I was on the same wavelength thinking through this, and there was no discussion. It may have had, but it didn't make the minutes, is how many pedestrian accidents have there been at that intersection? I don't know. That ought to be in the judgment. I think there'll be more when you could put this in there, because people aren't going to be seen even though those lights are flashing. It's going to cause more traffic accidents between two cars, because people aren't watching where they should be, and then all of a sudden, they're going to need to stop. I observe this traffic every day, many, many times, on West Street, and it's just, it's chaos. I'm sure that the project we have towards the end of this decade of projects will improve a lot of it, but given what's there now, I guess you figured out, I'm going to vote against it. Thank you.
Councillor, is this something that you would like to see referred back to committee? Councillor Remy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I hadn't really thought about that, so I actually really appreciate the councillor's comments on here. I know how many times I've come out of Pearl Street, and you're trying to wait to find a gap in traffic and pay attention to exactly when there's going to be a spot where there's not cars coming off the light at you and cars coming from Starbucks side, and to add that complexity of now I gotta watch that there's a person there. And it just, I can see that interaction going really poorly, whether it's somebody trying to come off West Street and cut through to try to get on West Street, or, you know, if there's backups at the Roma Joes, which I know those aren't going to happen anymore, but if those kinds of things happen, there's so much going on right there that it makes me really nervous. I understand the need for a way to cross the road there, because right now people just do it. They just run. But short of a full overhead light, like, I don't know how you would do it without just a stoplight there, because I don't think adding, incentivizing pedestrian traffic there is the right thing to do. I hadn't thought about that. I like the idea of being able to cross there, but that's scary for me. So, thank you for the comments.
Councillor Filio?
Thank you, Your Honor. These questions were asked at the committee level, and councillor Greenwald and all the committee, we're all very concerned about that. We ask these questions as for lane traffic. But if you think about things that we've added over the years, where we said it's not going to work, it's going to cause more accidents, because the, we've even talked about that when we've done the downtown development, where the flashing yellow lights will distract people. Well, if you look in front of the library, you know, you've got four lanes of traffic there, too. And I know when those lights are hit and that flashing yellow light comes on, it wakes you up. You're alert, because you're not always expecting a pedestrian to come out. And one of the reasons this was brought up, because the pedestrian traffic now, especially here at the Pearl Street area with, you know, the apartments, you know, the hotel there, and a lot of the foot traffic, that's not going to change. It's still going to be heavy, but if you've ever gone down there, people are darting out or, you know, they're halfway across and they're not sure. Public Works did mention to us, and I asked them about that, about the blinking yellow light. It'll be timed a little bit longer than, say, the one in front of the library, but most people know it's a flashing yellow light when the pedestrian clears, just like they do in front of the library. You know, I'm not going to wait, you know, the other 15 seconds for the light to go off. You look, nobody else is in your lane, and you go. The same is going to be true, and like I said, these questions were asked at the committee level. Now, at least people will be, I think it's going to be much safer. It's not going to change the fact that more or less people are going to cross there. It's just going to make drivers more alert that there's somebody crossing the street. So, anything, those flashing yellow lights, and yes, West Street is fast, and like I mentioned in front of the library, when those go on, I know every one of us, your foot immediately hits the brake. It's a safety feature, not perfect, but until we reconstruct West Street, it's the best we can do right now, so I hope you'll vote in favor of it.
Thank you. Any further comments? Councillor Bosley?
The only thing that I would like to add is that in the future, I would like us to consider including some sort of, I don't know what the Public Works term for it would be, but the median, that's sort of an escape area in the center of the road, which is what we have on Main Street now. And I know it took an accident happening on Main Street in order for us to get these flashing lights installed. Councillor Workman and myself had asked to have them included in the roundabout project down by Key Road. I think that in my personal experience, at night, it's almost impossible to see people all dressed in dark crossing, and these lights have kept me from creating accidents. I'm sure, you know, countless other drivers. So, I'm in support of the beacons crosswalk, for sure, but I definitely want to see some sort of median included in the future design, or as soon as we can, to give people relief and like a safe place to be in the center of that street. We do have lots of crosswalks that cross four lanes of traffic in this town, if you think about it. So, I know that we can make them work, and people are already crossing there. So, we just have to figure out how to make it the safest possible.
Thank you. Councillor Haas?
Thank you, Your Honor. I can't disagree with councillor Powers that, and I like when you refer to that end of West Street as a highway. It's a little faster-paced down there than it is up towards the library. I'm all in favor of any kind of traffic calming capabilities that we can, and this certainly would be traffic calming. It would lead to backups and often make that traffic subject to what I like to call the tyranny of the pedestrian, when they keep coming and pumping that light, even though there's timers on it. It introduces much more interruptions. I love the idea of traffic calming. I don't think at committee level, an alternative of just a full stoplight was considered, and if you might speak to what the thoughts were on that, it could be helpful here. Otherwise, I like any form of traffic calming or slowing things down, but it is troubling there. It is a highway. But if you could speak to the, what the discussions were around a full traffic light, I appreciate that.
Councillor Favalis, councillor Madison, councillor Filio.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm inclined, right now, I think, to support the committee motion and introduce the crosswalk here. I actually think, and certainly if the chair remembers this differently, then he can correct me after. I think that that was discussed. I think one of the concerns here was around, and I don't, again, looking at the Public Works Director as well, and so just shake your head if I'm way off, but I think there was some concern about the state having a right in that area to review some projects and approve some projects because of the proximity to the highway. So, this was really the feasible option in response to the complaints and concerns. From constituents, everybody has kind of touched on this and used this, I think, in different ways, but for me, the fact remains that we're not putting a crosswalk in where nobody's crossing, and all of a sudden, everybody's going to be crossing there. This is already a de facto crossing area. Pedestrians are already crossing at this space, and so I really don't think that adding a striped crosswalk and adding pedestrian beacons, which, by the way, that, the beacon piece of it, I think, will be going to FOP for a request, if I remember correctly, for the funding piece, so we may see that again. I just, I don't know that I see this making it less safe, because there are already pedestrians crossing in this area. So, I support this motion.
Thank you.
Do you want to address this?
Yeah. Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't see you up. Go.
We've got a couple of people in the queue. Councillor Madison?
Thanks. I think councillor Favalis kind of took her words out of my mouth, like, people, I
Thanks. I think Counsel Favelis kind of took her words out of my mouth. Like, people, I drive West Street pretty occasionally, and people do cross there, they're going to cross there anyways. They're going to keep crossing there whether we put this in or not. This is just a way to make it safer. That being said, I would like to actually see more of these beacons installed, especially on Washington Street and Court Street. I've almost been hit on Court Street. I've been, I think I was hit once on Washington by a pretty slow speed. It's pretty ridiculous. So, yeah, you should expect a request coming to address Court and Washington Streets soon, but I plan to support this in the meantime. Thanks.
Thank you. Counsel Philio? Okay. Counsel Greenwald.
Counsel Favelis is correct. We were told that, my light's on.
You are.
What? That, that area of West Street does involve the state. So, you know, that would just put it in the 10-year plan, or whenever. The folks are still going to cross anywhere they want to cross. So if we put in a crosswalk, maybe that will be an incremental safety issue. I remember back many years ago, I was in the CIP regarding West Street putting a median and limiting the left turns and, big project, and it just got mired in the whole process. So it's unfortunate, but this at least is a small step. What I do worry about, and I think Counsel Powers is right on this, it will give a false sense of security. There's a crosswalk and flashing lights, people are going to think they can just go, and the cars are looking to, they're not, they're not looking. So it worries me, but at least something is better than nothing. So that's where I am now.
Counsel Tullman.
Thank you. I don't always have a lot of confidence that when I push those buttons, that people are going to stop, which is, but on West Street, I push them every time because that's the only way that I can cross the street. And so I agree that I don't think this is the perfect solution, but I think that right now, until we redesign that section, this is the solution that's going to help people get where they need to go. There are people that don't have vehicles in that area, there are different developments, and people really do need to get across the street. So I will be supporting this.
Okay. I think we're ready for a vote. The motion is to carry out the intent of the committee report. All we need is a show of hands. All those in favor? 10 in favor, it looks like. All those opposed. Three opposed. Motion carries. Thank you for the robust conversation. The next couple of items on the agenda all relate to the downtown infrastructure project, D4, D5, and then we've got later G1. I'd like to just ask if there's no objection to move those to the end of the meeting, and we can accelerate our consideration of other topics.
That would take us to the next item of business, F1. And being January...
Yes, City Managers' Report.
Great, thank you. So we recently received a preliminary digital flood insurance rate map from FEMA. And this has been a process that's been ongoing for a number of years. It actually started in 2017 when FEMA came to the region and held meetings. It was for the whole Connecticut River watershed. And we received their updated maps, and we don't necessarily agree with all their changes. And so, community development and engineering, and I have to give a shout out to two people who are actually in the room tonight, our city engineer, who has done a ton of work late into the evening, Brian Ruoff, preparing a response to FEMA, and Will Schaffman, who has been doing a ton of work related to GIS. And the reason why this is so important is because these changes will impact whether or not a property is in the floodway potentially, which will restrict development. And it also could impact whether or not a property owner or business owner is required to have flood insurance. And so I think that, you know, going through this process and providing our input is important, and when we get to the public process again, it'll be important to engage the public as well. Community Development will, has been working on a list of potentially impacted properties with their changes, and so we will be sharing that in the near future. I also just wanted to give a little bit of information related to the Conservation Commission presentation related to invasive species. There will be some additional follow-up related to this, even though the item was accepted as informational. We are planning to come back to MSFI, Public Works, and Parks and Rec, and we will talk about some of the things that they raised. And some of those items relate to who do people contact, and also where do we find information. And so we are planning to come back and provide some additional information. I also wanted to give an update on some land. If you remember, several months ago, the Conservation Commission came before you and requested to purchase Zero Washington Street Extension, and it was purchased on behalf of the Conservation Commission. And that transaction was finalized in around the September timeframe. And I wanted to provide a, sort of a heads up, a teaser, an invite to the upcoming FOP meetings for January. We will be having presentations from the Fire Department regarding call volumes and staffing needs. These presentations are leading up to our request to submit a safer grant to bring on additional personnel. So I encourage everyone to attend and/or watch the recordings and provide comments and questions that you would like us to dig into further. I also want to recognize our Finance Director, Mary Howe. She has, once again, I don't know if she's in the room, but she's probably watching. We once again received recognition for our fiscal '23 financial reports, receiving the Government Finance Officer's Certificate for Achievement of Excellence in Financial Reporting. So kudos to Mary and her team. Might be our last one from this Finance Director, because tomorrow is her last day. So Mary is retiring from the city. She's been adamant about her desire to keep her retirement somewhat low-key, but she doesn't know this probably, so don't tell her. We are holding open house in the morning on the third floor. So we'll have pastries and coffee in the morning, starting at 10:00 a.m. And if councilors have the ability to stop by and wish her well and thank her for her service, that would be great. We are also having some brief remarks at 11:00, followed by cake at 11:30. So if any of those things interest you, pop on up to the third floor. And then I wanted to share some late-breaking news that Deputy City Manager Bohannon sent me this evening. The contractor has mobilized for 160 Water Street. I know that's been, I know, it's great news. It's been, that's been a tough project to get moving, and they have mobilized. And so the demo, the demolition of the finding building will begin on Monday. And that is it for me for tonight's comments.
Good news for the new year.
Our next item of business is a memorandum from my office, and it's your annual statement of interest filings. This is required under our current Rules of Order, Section 15. We realize that that section is before you for potential amendments, but at this point, this is the requirement for January. So we furnish these on your desk. If you could complete them and either give them to myself or Terry or Kathleen, that would be helpful, and we would like to receive them all back by the end of the month. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Annie?
On to ordinances for first reading. We've got quite a few. So the first one is a slight change dealing with some positions down in the Public Courts Department, and it is contained in Ordinance O-2025-01, an ordinance relating to class allocation and salary schedules.
And we will refer that, I catch up with the notes, but I refer that to Finance Personnel Committee.
The second one is Ordinance O-2025-02. That is actually coming from my department. It's really housekeeping. We had intended all along to recognize a counselor representative member on the Bicycle-Bedestrian Path Advisory Committee. Somehow or another, that got lost along the way. And we just recently noticed that regarding the Conservation Commission, that is a statutory committee, and the concept of a counselor as a member, as an ex officio member, is not recognized in statute. So for one committee, we're adding a counselor, and for the other committee, we're taking away the term counselor. Sorry, Counsel Williams. You'll continue to be a member, but we'll now be showing you as a citizen member.
Not in your status.
So that is Ordinance O-2025-02.
And we'll refer that also to Finance Organization and Personnel.
This next ordinance is coming in from our Fire Marshal Building Official, Richard Wood, and it deals with master boxes, and it's Ordinance O-2025-03.
And those master boxes are for the fire alarm notifications directly to the Fire Department. We'll refer that to Municipal Services Committee.
And our last ordinance is actually coming, coming out as a recommendation from the MSFI Committee. At their last meeting, they had discussed the installation of a stop sign on Genesee Street. That would be accomplished with Ordinance O-2025-04, an ordinance relating to installation of a stop sign on Genesee Street.
And we'll refer that also to Municipal Services Committee.
Going on to resolutions, we have a few this evening. So our first one is coming in from the Public Works Director, and it is relative to an appropriation for tree removal work. And it is Resolution R-2025-01.
We'll refer this resolution to Finance Organization and Personnel Committee.
Our second resolution is R-2025-02, a resolution in appreciation of Mary E. B. Howe upon her retirement.
And before we file that for further, future consideration, I'd like to ask Counsel Powers for a motion.
Thank you, Your Honor. I move for the adoption of Resolution 2025-02.
Second.
Moved by Counsel Powers, seconded by Counsel Bosley. Counsel Powers, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. I had to quickly change my notes here based on the information, the hot information just came from the City Manager. So once again, as she has done for the last four or five years, has managed to manage the finance process of this city to a point of award, an award in excellence based upon, for the city, based upon the Finance Department's performances and ability to meet the standards across the country. I mean, this is not just in town. This is, this is pretty prestigious, an award. And she and her staff have done a fine job, and I'm sure she's trained somebody else to begin to check all those points going down, because this is a process that needs you, you need to look at all year long to see what you're doing and make sure that it's right. Mary spent a lot of hours here. She's been here for the city for 12 years. She had a number of years over in Amherst as a Finance Director. And I do think she's got enough hours to meet the criteria for the state retirement system, which is a great achievement. A number of hours here. She probably is here because the car's in the ER. She's getting it done. She's leaving us. 12 years here at the city, Amherst. She's an accomplished accountant. She holds a CPA license. She's a member of a family business here in town that we all know and love, and I suspect we'll see her there a little more often than when she was here at City Hall all the time. For some reason, you'll also see her at a lot of sporting events, that green school down the street, a lot of history down there. And she's just been part of the community, and she intends to be part of the community in a different way now during retirement. The first thing is that she, she told me she is going to enjoy having nothing to do, but I warned her that that's not the case. So if you can swing by tomorrow, because she's going to be very modest about this, her being her last day, stop in, say hello, and congratulate her on retirement. Thank you.
Motion's on the floor. All those in favor, motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much, Counsel Powers. And we have one more resolution for the evening.
And it is coming out of the Municipal Services Facility and Infrastructure Committee. It is dealing with Resolution R...
Can you turn on your microphone, please?
Coming out of the Municipal Services Facility and Infrastructure Committee is Resolution R-2024-44 relating to the Keene Roadway Safety Action Plan of 2025. The Municipal Services Committee is recommending the adoption of the resolution.
Counsel Greenwald for a motion.
Thank you. Move for the adoption of Resolution R-2024-44.
Second. Moved by Counsel Greenwald and seconded by Counsel Philio. Counsel Greenwald for committee.
We heard about the Keene Roadway Safety Action Plan. There was a committee that worked on it, and it's very important. This is useful and are getting grants and submissions for different things through the state and feds. So very simply, recommending adoption of the ordinance, of the resolution.
Just confusion on a different item, but nonetheless. Okay, good. So that motion is on the table for the Highway Safety Plan, Roadway Safety Plan. Any discussion? We saw this previously. Okay, seeing none. All those in favor of the motion? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
That takes us back to the items that were on your agenda previously. So we start off with a, an informational report from the Municipal Services Committee. It is the input from the Heritage Commission on the design details in the downtown infrastructure project, and the committee is recommending that communication be accepted as informational.
Without exception, we'll accept that as informational.
And then we would also have input from the Bicycle-Bedestrian Path Advisory Committee. You might recall that one of the design options was delayed at the MSFI Committee on the 18th, awaiting this recommendation, this input from the Bicycle-Bedestrian Path. That's what you have in your packet tonight, and I believe the intent is to file that as informational.
And without objection, we will file that as informational.
And then that takes us to the report itself. And it is from the Municipal Services Facility Infrastructure Committee. It's the approval of the final design details for the downtown infrastructure project. And before I read this recommendation, I would bring to your attention that we took the opportunity to list out the actual options that were discussed at the meeting. So you had sort of the granular perspective as well as this overall motion. That motion says, on a vote of five to zero, the Municipal Services Facility and Infrastructure Committee recommends the City Council approve the final design for the downtown infrastructure project, and that the City Manager be authorized to do all things necessary to implement the project with the street furnishings, materials, and design preferences discussed.
And Counsel Greenwald for a motion.
Move to carry out the intent of the committee report.
Second. Moved by Counsel Greenwald, seconded by Counsel Philio.
Thank you, Your Honor. Well, it was a four-hour meeting. I just wanted to tell you that. And I want to thank the committee for making it through. So let's see, if I can condense four hours down to 10 minutes, maybe. Before I really get into it, I just want to really say thank you to the four-minute taker that condensed all this information and did a really, really good job. Britta Rita, and she...
She's remote.
She's remote. Thank you, thank you. I hope it never happens again. Okay, so now, going to step away a little bit from the decisions, just to refocus our conversation a bit. This evening, we're not talking about if there's going to be a downtown rebuild. We're not talking about when it's going to be. We're talking about design features. We're not talking about when it's going to be. We're talking about design features, and that's real important. I want to refocus our attention a little bit, because it's gotten a little heated at different times. This project is for the betterment of all Keene residents and visitors. It is for the betterment of the merchants and restaurants, and the benefit of the property owners. It is not being promoted by city staff, the manager, or the betterment of the city council. We are all in this together. There's been a lot of meetings that have brought us to this point. They've all been open for public comment. Sometimes the public and merchants have shown up. A little disappointed not to see any merchants here this evening, but hopefully they've all lived through that four-hour meeting. Everything has been open. So tonight, we're approving design details of the final design. Decisions were made as we went through all these different issues, considering that this is going to be a first-class project, but not overly expensive. So cost was considered, long-term function was considered, and design. We didn't choose the cheapest. We made the best choices. And consistently, I think the committee was looking at the issues as though we were spending our own money, which we really are as we are making these decisions. Okay. I'll hit some of the high points you all have before you pack it of what the PowerPoint consisted of. Stantec, our consultant, did a fantastic job of laying out the choices as we went through. We had some, I would say, some extravagant possibilities, but I think we made some good decisions. The sidewalks are basically going to be standard stamped concrete, not pavers. Bike lanes are in there, absolutely. Bike lanes are in there. I'll say it again. However, if you look through the design booklet, it shows a, what I refer to as color, baby poo green. It's not going to be that. The recommendation was more of a brick tone, stamped brick, so it will blend with downtown and also be functional as a sidewalk. The raised crosswalks will have stamped concrete, again, not pavers. There was an issue about the bike racks that we were a little uncertain of at the committee level, but we heard from the bicycle committee that the U-shaped racks would be a good choice, and to make it a little nicer, depending on the cost, get the city new logo on the side, just to jazz it up a little. That shouldn't be too bad. Trash cans, it's amazing, all the little details we had to go through in the four hours. Decision was to have the recycling compactors wherever possible. Fire hydrants. Whoever thinks about fire hydrants? Well, we did. So we had a couple of interesting choices. We're going with the basic, it's reusable standard parts. Planters, tree wells, that was another issue. Around the trees, if they're just separate trees, not in a planter, committee is recommending these iron grates that we currently have. They seem to have worked pretty well. Talked about fire hydrants, tree wells. Traffic signals and light posts will be similar to what we have, the basic fluted of Washington Base, they called it. Skipping over a whole bunch of stuff. In Railroad Square, this is interesting, because that's going to be a focus area, being Railroad Square, committee is recommending getting actual rails to simulate where the train could have gone or actually did go. There were a couple of interesting options of faking it with brick or with some metal strips, but Public Works assures us that we could probably get it out of the state, get a couple of real rails laid in there. Another big feature is the gateway arches. I think that will be a very nice feature, and there were several different choices, and if you want to look through your pamphlet, you'll see what was picked. What else? Railroad Square, standard concrete, but also having some featured areas with pavers in the center. Benches were selected, basic metal benches with wooden slats. We had other choices that could have been stoned, thinking that this is going to be cost-effective and also very functional. In Central Square, the benches would be a backless version, so that depending if you're watching a concert or if you're having a conversation, it makes sense. What else do I have here? That's about it. And just to wrap up my presentation to you, bike lane, I said would be brick color. The fountain is going to remain in the center of the common. We did not get into the design of the fountain itself, whether it's going to be the mound of rocks, or if we're going to get something a little more classic. I think that's going to take some folks with more aesthetic taste than I. There also was a presentation of the project phasing, of how it would be broken out, and the ombudsman, working between the contractor, the city, and the downtown community. Finally, just to ask a procedural suggestion, if you have any problem with any of the issues presented, if you could move to refer it back to the committee for further consideration and discussion, instead of getting into a committee of the whole, you know, sausage-making, I think it would be a good thing. Any questions, or not?
I think there'll be quite a few, but maybe not. But recognize next, the city manager?
I just wanted to maybe ask a couple of clarifying questions. From the MSFI meeting, I think the decision was actually trash cans, not the compactors, because the compactors are more expensive, even though we made the case for emptying them a lot less and for better recycling. The committee actually recommended the regular trash cans.
Thank you.
And in regards to the bike lane, there was a lot of conversation about the bike lane and the reason why it's green, and how it wouldn't be that color green that in the picture, but it would be a muted color of green, and it would be into the pavement. So it's not, it's actually not painted. It's into the concrete. And so those are the two things that I.
Okay. Yes, it is dyed concrete.
Yes.
But it is not green.
It is greenish. And so unless you want something different.
I am colorblind.
And there's a reason for it. There's a reason for it. Bike lanes are typically green, and so we didn't pick the green because we liked it, but we can change the color of the green to a darker green. It should be, Dawn, help me out here?
Thank you, Your Honor, with your indulgence. Just about jumping out of my chair back there. Yeah, my recollection of the discussion reflects the city manager's. There is standard for bike lanes under the big book, as Councilor Powers refers to it, and that green is sort of the universally accepted color for bike lanes. That said, I would like to suggest, we have an opportunity to give you a little bit better picture of what that would look like. What I would like to do is pour a couple of small slabs over near Public Works with two different colors, so we could see what the options are. And I think, I'm really quite certain that when you see the muted green that the city manager is talking about, and that's just, it's a factor of, the color impregnated concrete doesn't have those bright, vibrant, you know, dayglow colors. It's just not that, you know, they're not able to replicate that color with the concrete. I think when you see that muted green, I think you'll be very happy with it.
This is what I didn't want to get into, a debate over something like that. Are we getting any money from anybody that wants to tell us what color that concrete is? The answer is no. So if we want it to be brick color, we can be brick color. But I will look at the slabs, and then acknowledging that I'm colorblind, so I'm going to bring somebody to help me.
Councilor Filio.
Yeah, obviously, we don't want to get into every little detail here. We'd be here all night like we were the other night. It was a four-hour meeting. I'm with Councilor Greenwald. I don't recollect recommending a green paver. It could have been at the end of the four hours, but I believe this looks like this part of it's going to go back to committee anyhow. So whatever recommendation we have tonight, I'm saying hold off on the color, you know, and since you're going to do a few samples for us, maybe it'll be a color, maybe it'll just remain regular concrete, but I don't recollect approving a green color, so maybe, maybe the four hours is a little bit long.
So let me try to give a little context of where we are, I think, tonight. The materials are really important, and I think that's what the recommendations are here, meaning that what the color is, is a little footnote in the bid spec. What the material is, is something that somebody needs to bid on and that needs to be designed around. So I think there's room for us to make comments, like Councilor Greenwald has just made, and for those color kinds of decisions. I've got a couple of comments that I'd like to make too, that I think fit into that category of not changing the materials, but perhaps adding some detail that we'd like to have, like a specific color or a handrail, something where, so we can come back to those things. The other thing, while I've kind of disrupted the flow and you are ready to jump into the discussion, is to say, this is a large project. We all know that, but the pedestrian's experience is in these details. And what's above, what's on the surface and above the surface is what we will experience on a daily basis. So these are important, and I think the kind of consideration that took a four-hour meeting, the kind of consideration that the council has given to this project, these are all important steps in the process. And I think, so what we ought to be doing now, I think, just to keep us moving in a manner, is to identify those elements that you want to make sure are pulled out for some kind of different treatment, where you're either questioning the committee's recommendation, or you want something else, some further discussion on a topic. If we can pull those out, we can divide the question and then move on those things that there seemed to be consensus around as the first question, and, well, after we divide the question. And we can make some good progress tonight and then isolate those elements that are for further consideration. Yes.
So can I just add to that? So for this one, for example, this decision could still be concrete with integral color, color to be decided later.
All right. Go on. I'll start this way. I always go this way, but.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Councilor Workman.
I just want to note for the clarity, for the MSFI committee did vote to recommend for the integral concrete color. That was what we had.
For the bike path.
For the bike path. And my recollection was, we did discuss the green color, but I'm happy to talk about that at a later date, but we did, it was a consensus about the integral concrete color.
Councilor Fabley.
Thank you. Just a quick comment. It's already been mentioned repeatedly tonight how long this meeting was, and it wasn't just a long meeting, though. It was a productive one, and we really got into a lot of the issues and asked a lot of the questions. I think that the things we really were centering here were pedestrian safety. We had some conversations about that. The cost efficiency, right, and wanting to make sure, I think Councilor Filio said, you know, let's get this project done. Let's not waste money while we're doing it, and I think that was top of mind for us as well. And so recognizing that there were a lot of hands up still, and that there's going to be further discussion on this, at this point, I would want to encourage the council to support this motion as presented, or with the change around the bike lane colors and what the actual concrete is. There was a lot of thought that went into this on the part of the consultants, on the part of staff, and then for the final look at committee, on the part of the committee members as well. So I am open to a hearing, of course. You know, any questions that we may have, again, it was a four-hour meeting, and some of it was quite late at night, so there are absolutely questions that we may not have thought of that councils here have, but I am hoping that we can finally kind of put a cap on this heavy-lifting council piece of this project and kind of close this particular chapter of it by approving this.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Bosley?
Not that I don't love the conversation about color, but the second point that I want to keep us moving along here, that I wanted to bring up, and I did, well, first of all, I just want to say thank you to the MSFI committee, because I watched it from home with the privilege of like laying in my bed and being nice and comfy, and it was a long, hard meeting, and PLD has done a few of those, so I know how difficult it gets when it's past nine o'clock. And I want to say there were a couple of points that I picked up on. I know some things that I'm not going to argue here, but, you know, it was really interesting to me, looking at some of the fire hydrant decisions and the trash can decisions. I'm willing to support the committee's recommendation on all of those things. I do want to say that we looked at the gateway arch during that meeting, and it wasn't really clear to me. I think our mayor spoke about this briefly, and I want to make sure this is maybe on the to-be-determined side of things, if there wasn't a clear consensus around this. But the decisions about the pedestals were made, and the style of posts were made, but the cutout or the writing for those arches, I really want to make sure that that is very clear, and that we don't lose that during different times of day, or night, or lighting, or if we can make sure that some consideration is given to making sure that that's a really prominent feature of those archways. That was one of my points I wanted to make.
Thanks for bringing that up. I think that that was one of the places that the minutes did not reflect the conversation in the committee, and so that is that the lettering be solid lettering and not punch out from a solid metal piece. Yeah. Councilor Remmy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll keep it brief, because it sounds like it's just what do we want to carry out of this. I'd love to hear, I want to talk more about the trash recycling one, because I think the big belly things make sense, and get the, like, the ones we have are fine. It's a little more up front, but if it saves you money long-term, it's worth it, right? It's the ROI of that, especially as wasteful becomes more and more of a problem we're having. So if it's a better sortation for recycling, we're having a big problem with that, and it's going to get worse. The other thing, it's not in any of this, it was originally part of the, we were told it's part of final design, but it's not in any of it, is actual physical bollards and something. Yeah, so I missed that. So those are not in any of the plans, and I would like to understand that piece. And then for the events in general, we're discussing that we are going to have limited impact on the businesses around town, but we have to operate under this crazy altered event plan, and I don't understand why, if we're not going to be affecting the businesses that much, why we can't continue to use Central Square.
Yes, I don't want to interrupt.
Don't worry.
Okay. I think the safety bollards were a continuing item. There was no design presented about that. Councilor Filio raised the point, and I think the chairman asked for that to be brought back to the committee by the design team, so, yes. We need to add that to the list as a continuing topic.
City manager, how would you want to deal with that? Just put that as part of the recommendation, background notes, or?
Yeah, it can be, it's fine as background notes. We're going to bring it back and have that conversation.
Councilor Lee.
It's not part of this mission, no.
Well, first, a question is, the hanging lights, I know there were three options. Was one of those chosen?
Yes.
Or was it kind of left hanging? And which was it?
Councilor Greenwald.
The choice was the bare bulbs with the, what's it called, cost extra? The choice was the bare bulbs with the, what's it called, cost extra?
An add alternate?
Add alternate for what the fixtures would, would be. So that's a...
So it didn't have the cage, or it did?
Right now, it doesn't.
Okay.
But we will get it as, how much extra would it cost?
Okay. My preference would be for the, for the cage because if we can prevent these light bulbs from breaking and, you know, having glass on the ground, let's do that instead of taking a risk there.
Don't disagree.
So for, this, this one was under Railroad Square and Gilbo Avenue. It's called the catenary lighting. The recommendation is for bare bulbs with a cage fixture as a bid alternate.
Yeah.
Yours...
I don't care. Go for the fixtures if you want to spend the money.
But if we can have that as a bid alternate and see what it is, that would be my preference.
And that is the recommendation? Okay, very good. Further comments? Counselor Powers.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just clarification, different ballards. It's on, it shows me on the design, the ballards and the chains on Central Square. Are we...
These are the traffic-stopping ballards?
No, I'm on a different, different ballard. That was his ballard. I'm on a different ballard.
Ballard, ballard.
Ballard, ballard.
You're on the light ballard on Main Street?
No, right here, Central Square.
Yes, those two.
With the chains.
Yes.
It doesn't really tell us, and I just want to get clarification. Are we keeping those and moving them, or are we starting over again?
Your Honor, if I may, yeah, the intention has always been to retain the...
I better recognize you. Just Don Lucier, so they probably have your voiceprint down by now.
The intention is to retain the granite post and chains. Some of them will be relocated, and we're gonna need to add some more because the, the expansion of that footprint. There's, so that, I guess there's really three ballards, if you want to look at it that way. There's the, the lighting ballards that'll be used where, you know, there's individual locations where we want to add lighting. There's the security ballards that'll be removable for events, and then there's the, the system around Central Square.
Thank you.
And those will remain granite.
Good. Any further concern?
Yes, but I'll save it for this next meeting. Thank you.
You'll save it for, is that, I guess I'm trying to sort out, is it something that needs further discussion in the committee?
To keep it sorted. The flags that we put out a couple of times a year are really part of the Ballard system, and it needs growth. And so it needs some discussion before it all gets said and done because the veterans are always asking me, and I want to have an answer. Thank you.
So I think, just following our guidance here, that we have ballards in the, in the specifications as recommended. That's clear. What needs to be further scoped is how flags would be affixed to those ballards.
Thank you.
Thanks for the comment. I've got a couple that I feel compelled to share. The, the, the ballards with the light ballard, which was selected, it's not a matter of the light ballard. I've just, my experience with those, and those at Keene State College can, can take note. They're very few. It's mostly because they don't shed much light. And I'd like to suggest that that be a bid alternate so that we can see what the pricing is on those relative to the effectiveness of, of those. The city managers advised me, I've got a concern about the tree wells. It's, the recommendation is to use the kind of grates that we currently have. I'm not suggesting that it be something other than a grate. I just think that there are some horticulturists that we can easily consult with to determine the appropriate size of those grates for either a new tree or existing trees that are quite large and need better root, less root coverage than perhaps a new tree. I, so it's just a matter of, it's not a matter of changing material. It is a matter of, is the size appropriate for the trees? The, and then when it comes to the benches, I think the bench selection is, is appropriate again. It's a, it's a wrought iron frame with a finished wood slats, whether that's with a back or it's backless. But I think that to avoid overnight sleeping on city benches, that they need, it's not shown in the drawings, but we need, we do need appropriate divisions for seating in those so that they, they serve the purpose that they're meant to serve. And then those were, those were my thoughts. I think those can, again, not changing materials, it's just trying to clarify.
I thought I had heard that there was gonna be one other adjustment.
Yes.
Yeah, there will be.
Yeah.
So it seems like the only to-be-determined really is the cement color. So that kind of short-circuits the whole amendment process. And I think the background notes could cover that.
Yes.
Unless there is an amendment. Counselor Filio, no?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, yes, thank you.
Thank you for, it was, actually, MSFI, we kind of discussed it. It kind of came out of MSFI at three to two. It had to do, if you look at page 40 in your infrastructure handout here, it had to do with, with covers for Railroad Square. You know, you'll see there's an option one, and option two, and an option three. It was a vote of three to two at MSFI to go with option three. My personal opinion, I believe it was Counselor Greenwald's counsel opinion, is was, we went for no option. We felt that this was just not a necessary expense for the taxpayers. And if, say, a, you know, Bicycle Advisory Committee or another group wanted to raise funds for it and build it, that'd be fine. Some of the arguments were it'll keep snow off bicycles, which is kind of an oxymoron. I just didn't, we just didn't feel, I know Counselor Greenwald and I didn't feel, that it was an expense that we could bring to our constituents and say was a wise expense. So I think that was probably the only thing out of the, everything that you see tonight that I felt should be eliminated. So I'll be glad to hear some comments, but that'll be an amendment that I'll make is to, to remove this. Actually, I'll make the amendment that we remove the, the covered structure for Railroad Square off the proposal.
Second.
Okay. You've heard my comments, and we can go from there.
All right, we've got a suggested amendment. Let's just, I just want to, this is on Railroad Square. So it's on page 117 in our agenda packet. It's called a shade structure. The motion made by, the amendment offered by Counselor Filio to remove the shade structure, seconded by Counselor Greenwald, and we've got some discussion to be had by that. Counselor Remy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm wondering if the counselor would be amenable to making it a bid alternate instead of making, removing it as the piece so that we can just, I don't know what the downside is of just getting a price for having it. Because then if Bicycle Path Advisory Committee wants to donate the money, or whoever wants to donate it, we have a price that says, yeah, it's 10 grand, and we can have it as opposed to just straight up removing it. I don't know the downside of a bid alternate for that.
Counsel, the city manager.
There's no downside of a bid alternate. The concern that I raised at the MSFI meeting is more related to activity that happens under shaded structures. In many of our parks, we've had to remove the covers so that they didn't become permanent gathering locations. And so I was proposing, if there was going to be a structure at all, that it at least be semi-open.
Counselor Williams.
I like the shade structure. People have asked for shade on Railroad Square. It's also important, you know, if there's a downpour, people have someplace to go to be dry. I think it's a valuable asset, and I support having it.
Counselor Bosley.
I just have a question about the shade structure because this was not very clear to me. I think that there are three on page 40. There are three options presented to the committee. Two of them show semi-open structure over pedestrians in the square. The third option that was chosen shows a cover over bike racks. I don't think we need to cover bike racks in the square. If we are talking about shade structures for pedestrians in the square, like Counselor Williams suggested on, you know, a concert on a hot summer day, and you have some shade, I could potentially listen to an argument for that. But I don't think we need structure over bike racks. And if that's all it is, and I just need to be really clear, like, is that what we're proposing? Or are we proposing a structure for pedestrians in the square for shade?
It is the former.
Then I'm not in favor of that.
Counselor Felice.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I recall this conversation at committee, and I had said the same thing, that my opinion on this depended on whether or not this was a, at the very least, I think I said, a shared usage, where maybe a bike rack is under it, but really the primary usage is as a refuge spot for pedestrians. I guess that I now, after here, I'm now maybe unclear about what the, what the ultimate outcome of that was. I see here in the online packet that option three, cover structure, and then in parentheses, with mix of gathering space and bicycle parking is what is in the, is what is in the online packet. I think that I, I am opposed to the amendment that is currently on the floor and opened a conversation about making it a bid alternate. I just, I would not want us, this, I recall this being a constituent request that we want shaded spaces downtown, whether it's for events, whether it's for, you know, elderly people walking downtown. There is a, you know, and it's very hot out. There's a rainstorm like Counselor Williams mentioned. So I recall this as being part of the conversation, and I'm really hesitant to remove something that I think there is demand for. And equally hesitant to, you know, take it out and whether or not another amendment's made around a bid alternate or not. You know, having a, normally, I would be all for a kind of private group or a separate group doing the fundraising, but then what this could turn into is fundraising for a cover for a bike rack, if it is, as Counselor Filio suggested, the kind of BPAT committee. So if we're gonna have a shade structure at all, I would like for it to be, as Counselor Bosley said, for pedestrian usage or shared usage, or not just a kind of cover over a bike rack. I think that the photo that was chosen was maybe not the best photo for clarity on this point. But I'm gonna urge a no vote on the amendment currently in front of us.
Well, just to be clear then, what is proposed, what was proposed, Counselor Greenwald, correct this if I'm off base, is a cover for, over bike racks. That, that is what's, that's what was presented.
Can we, can we just get to the page in the packet so I can look at the exact...
Forty, 131.
131.
That's, that's a little early than that, but the final consensus is...
May I?
Yes, please. City manager.
So...
I'm looking at our minutes.
I know.
All right, one, one at a time.
So you're, you're absolutely right. The picture in the packet is, is showing a covered structure over a bike rack. But the committee did say they did not want that to be for bikes only. The committee said if it was going to happen, they wanted it to be shared use. And that's why in your packet, when you have the summary of the recommendations, there's a parentheses that says covered structure with mix of gathering space and bicycle parking.
What page is that? 24.
I'm feeling like this is something that needs to get, the conversation about a shaded structure for pedestrian use, as has been suggested, has not been fleshed out at this point. And if that's, if that's the case, then I'd say that there, it ought to be some separate conversation to be had.
I think the only difference is the picture should show benches along with bike racks. I, I don't think we had time to go back and change the picture. But from the committee, that's what they were asking for, was shared use.
Counselor Workman.
Thank you, Your Honor. If we go into our agenda packet on page 131, the first sentence of the shade structure states that, that it was a proposed shade structure on Railroad Square. And that's kind of where I'm going with the whole conversation, that it was discussed, that it would be benches, bike racks, or both. They're pre-manufactured products. So that's where I'm getting a lot of my background and my understanding of the conversation we had at MSFI about this. So my understanding was there were a couple of different options throughout this packet that had hypothetical images, but not necessarily what we had fully discussed.
There is a, on the, on the design, there is a placement of the shade structure with approximate dimensions, yeah. I, I think those are final details we can work out. We just need to know, do you want a shade structure or not? And if you do want it, do you want it for shared use, which is what came out of the committee?
Yeah, my, my concern here is that I don't recall it being located anyplace other than where the bikes were. And the location, orientation, and anything that fits underneath it seems, and the dimensions of what it would need to be in order to accommodate some of the uses that are being suggested seem like they have not really been presented to the committee. So I, anyway, Counselor Greenwald.
Didn't really want to get so deep into it, but this was nowhere in any of the discussions, presentations other than when it was presented to us by StanTech in this, in these slides. So if you want a, a structure that I'm gonna guess will cost $100,000, yeah, for people to sit and hang out under all afternoon, vote for it. It serves no function that is going to do any good. Covering a bicycle so they don't get wet, gee, I'm sorry. I have an electric bike. I don't leave it out in the rain. I'm not gonna leave it outside. I wouldn't leave it unattended anywhere downtown, whether it's locked up or not. And it's an easy add in the future. When the project's all done and we all feel great about it and the Bicycle Committee or whoever wants to raise some money to do it, go right ahead. I don't want to spend taxpayer money on this. There's no function whatsoever.
Go ahead. Counselor Haas.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just a couple corrections here. The bicycling is a year-round sport. I think I need to get a fat tire bike for Counselor Filio. I'm sure he'll, he'll love it. He would love it. I know it. One of the things that can, forced the idea, or pushed forward the idea of having a shelter is the expense of modern bikes and their cost to have some kind of bike shelter. And, you know, further on, there's discussion about bike lockers and all kinds of different ways of protecting bikes, especially e-bikes. And if you're gonna be used and you get caught downtown, you don't want that getting rained on. But they, you know, they're highly expensive, and that's, that's where this evolution of the bike shelter came up. However, as Counselor Greenwald just pointed out, this sort of came from all different ideas, and it even got... sort of came from all different ideas, and it even got convoluted with the, the solar panel shelter. That was originally talked about going over the farmer's market. And it came out of there, and then it migrated over to Railroad Square, and it went through all of these other machinations that nobody really knows exactly what it is. We have a picture that we're all judging on. We don't know what that picture is. It's just a symbolic representation. Without dimensions for the thing, I mean, this picture doesn't keep much rain off of anything. So, it's, it's something that probably should be put aside to be considered realistically in the future. Thank you.
So, the, the motion on the table, just to remind us, is to strike the shade structure from the recommendations. Council Philio.
I appreciate your offer of the right, Council Haas. I suggest you keep the money and save it for a structure. Council Greenwald is correct. When we, of course, the MSFI committee's been on this for years, one of the things our constituents has told us, and they've told all of us, they said, most people at least have said, we know it has to get done, don't blow money. They've asked us that. They, they've put this project into our hands and just said, do what needs to be done, but don't spend money where you don't have to. This is a perfect $100,000 we don't have to spend. Once again, if somebody wants to spend $100,000 to cover some bikes, I suggest you do a fundraiser, because I don't think the council should be paying for it. Because actually, we're not paying for it. Our constituents are.
Council Tobin.
Thank you. I do remember constituents talking about wanting something to cover their bikes, which is how I thought this conversation started. It was located specifically where, in a location that was along the bike path. That was my understanding. And one thing that I, that was brought up is that, because I did ask, I was confused at the beginning of this conversation, beginning of that conversation, thinking that initially, we were talking about the shade structure by Gilbo, which, then I was reminded, was now being for cars. It was a shelter for cars. So, then the point was brought up, that while we were providing infrastructure for cars, but shelter would also be required for bikes. And one thing that I just keep thinking is that we are building infrastructure for bikes, and bikes will need certain infrastructure if they are going, if we want to encourage people to use that as a mode of transportation. As Council Greenwald said, he wouldn't leave his bike out in the rain. And if he were, if, if we were riding downtown, where would I leave my bike downtown? So, I think that is the question. So, I, I would still support a shade structure. I would be comfortable with it being a potential add-on item, but that would be my two cents.
All right. Manager wants to offer a correction.
Just want to clarify on, so we've talked about two shade structures for a while now. And the one on Gilbo actually is, is, its primary purpose is to provide solar power for all of our electricity use in the downtown project. It does cover cars that we then can use for other purposes, like events and things of that nature, but its primary purpose is to generate the solar. The second shade, shade structure is, has been shown on your design, and it is exactly as you described, Council Tobin, near the bike path where it comes in. It's, it's, we've talked about it being sort of a variety of things for bikes, for, for sitting, and for events. And so, that one is the one, I think, that, that is still being discussed by MSFI as being a multi-use one. But I just wanted to clarify, the one on Gilbo is for solar.
Yeah. Council Favelis.
Just real quickly, I think that my only, as I've heard council discussing this, I, I do think we're maybe at less of a consensus point about what the purpose of this shade structure would be. I had an understanding coming out of committee that I think is reflected in the minutes and reflected in the agenda packet, that some of the comments and support have centered around the bicycle usage. Some of the comments of potential support have centered around it being, or have been conditional on it being a shared use. And so, again, I am not, I don't want to pull it out, so I continue to urge a no vote on this amendment. Perhaps making this an ad alternate, as Council Remy suggested, would allow this process to continue moving forward towards some kind of resolution, and give MSFI and any other interested parties, councilors or otherwise, some more opportunity to consider what exactly the use would be. I've heard some dimension questions as well. So, I think that the, I think the best course of action is a no vote on this amendment, and then I would be willing to support an amendment like Council Remy had suggested to, again, the process has to move forward, but there is still some time to have additional conversations. We're not locked in to anything. Thank you.
The motion on the table, where is a amendment to the motion to approve, amendment to delete the shade structure. And we can show a hands on this. I think we're ready to vote. All those in favor of the amendment to delete the shade structure?
Please, one.
Yep. Two, four, six, seven. All those opposed to the amendment? The amendment's passed. We have the main motion. Council Remy.
Mr. Mayor, I would move to amend to include it as a bid alternate on the no as the primary.
Second.
So, no, it's not in there, but an alternate option of a bid alternate. I'm actually happier with this result, being out with a bid alternate than I am with having it in.
Well, we have another amendment. Council Remy.
Second.
It's seconded by Council Favelis, and we'll recognize Council Philio.
I have no problem with that. I won't vote it in no matter what comes back, unless it's a, you know, a community event where there's going to be a fundraiser on it. But as long as it's, it's not there right now, if the taxpayer has to pay for it, you want to look at it down the road, have somebody else pay for it, fine. So, I'm fine for it to be looked at, but I'll never waste $100,000 when I don't have to.
Council Williams.
When it's time for a parking garage, are we going to have a fundraiser for that?
Thank you. Council Haas.
Thank you, Your Honor. We will refer this to Bike PAC. I know it's not part of the amendment, but Bike PAC will weigh in on what this thing could look like, along with dimensions, and provide that advice to MSFI.
I, Council Remy, I, thank you. Thank, Council Remy, I, just for clarification here, is your motion intended to see a, a design presented to MSFI that can address the, the thoughts of the committee and the council?
Yeah, my intent, thank you, Mr. Mayor, my intent is largely just, what is the cost of putting a roof as designed in this area, whether we have bike racks all the way under it, halfway under it. I don't know that that's going to affect the cost at all. It's just to understand how much it is to build this structure, because I don't believe $100,000, but maybe. And we are a city, so they overcharge us for everything, but that seems incredibly high. But for the four to six posts, because the original design, StanTech has a visual of it in our 3D models, that you can look at and see how it's laid out, and it has, like, looks like three or four bike rack spots, but the rest of it's open, which I like that design kind of, I don't know. But it's, if it's $100,000, I'm on the other side of the issue. But I would, I want to understand how much it would cost to build that structure. So, we'll be getting a bid on it as an alternate. So, the primary is none, but the alternate is, for another $100,000, we can have this on. Hopefully, $10,000.
I got it.
Okay, we've got an amendment on the floor. The chair is not going to argue the vagaries of this. But we're ready for a vote. All those in favor of an amendment to add a shaded structure as a bid alternate?
Oh, yeah.
We have a unanimous vote. Is that right? Any opposed? Motion carries.
Right, but it's okay.
This is like in the college schedule, TBD. Okay. We are back to the main motion with but one amendment to it. Any further conversation on the recommendations that are before us? Council Remy.
I'd raise the big-billy trashcans as one that I want to come back to. I don't know if that's something we need to decide on right now, because it's something that sits on top of the ground, it's not installed, or if that's something we can have further conversation, because I just think it's a waste of money. If it's up, up front, it's 20 bucks, and it saves you 10 bucks a year.
I mean.
Manager.
And I don't know how the public works director feels about this, but why don't we do a bid alternate on this as well? Because I do think we could then know the difference in costs, and do the, you know, an analysis of time saved versus the time that we empty them, recycling. We can maybe come back with additional information.
And the difference in size that there is as an obstruction on a pedestrian way.
Yeah, more understanding.
Yeah, Council Jones.
I was agreeing with the city manager. Should we make a motion to make that a bid amendment?
Yeah. Seconds.
As a bid.
I guess that's a motion, okay.
So, so, to be clear, the bid will have the current trash receptacles as the base bid, but seek a bid alternate for trash compactor.
That was my motion, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Council Jones. So, we have that amendment now on the floor.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the second.
Me.
Seconded by Council Remy. Council Philio.
So, warning the council here that despite the due diligence that MSFI has done over the years in the four-hour meeting the other night, we seem to be saying, no, let's add money back in. No, let's add money back in. You know what? No, that, you know, and you start adding $10,000, $100,000, another $10,000, you could say, well, that's not much. We're not paying for it. They are. So, let's start paying attention. The old, watch your pennies, and the dollars will watch themselves. Sounds like we're not doing that tonight, because we know what happened. We start sending things out for an alternate bids, like, yeah, you know what? We can justify it. You know, we could justify every recommendation in here that was the most expensive one, but we didn't do that. We took our time to do a project that'll work, and that'll be sustainable, and that won't overburden the taxpayers. Let's remember who's paying for this project.
Thank you, Randy. I mean that. We need to not have public comment. Yes, Council Remy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My only comment to that is, at one point in time, we made a decision to go to concrete sidewalks and granite curbing, because it was the right decision long-term for maintenance, that we don't have to keep repairing them every couple of years, and we're making the right decision for the long-term. I'm not saying we should go with the compactors, but having them as a big bid alternate, being able to understand, do that same level of diligence and math, I don't see the harm in getting smarter. That's all.
Okay. We have had a discussion on this amendment. Ready for a vote? The vote is on amendment to add a bid alternate for trash compactors. All those in favor, raise your hand. We have twelve in favor, and opposed is one. Okay. We are now back to the main motion, and seeing no further discussion.
Well, before you vote on the biking color, right, is that something?
No.
I don't, I don't think so. It's just a specification of.
Turn it later.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay. We have the motion. All those in favor of the motion. Motion carries unanimously.
Nope.
Nope.
Sorry. All those opposed, and one opposed. Twelve to one. Okay. Thank you very much. I now want to recognize Council Greenwald for a motion.
Moved to go into a non-public session to discuss land matters under RSA 91A32E, and the consideration or negotiation of pending claims or litigation under RSA 91A32E, and legal advice under RSA 91A32L.
Second.
Moved by Council Greenwald, and seconded by Council Bosley. All those, we need to do a roll call.
Council Bosley.
Yes.
Council Tobin.
Yes.
Council Remy.
Yes.
Council Philio.
Yes.
Council Williams.
Yes.
Council Haas.
Yes.
Council Jones.
Yes.
Council Madison.
Yes.
Council Roberts.
Yes.
Council Favelis.
Yes.
Council Workman.
Yes.
Council Greenwald.
We are now in executive session with a five-minute recess.